My name is Jason Perro, Chairman, and I call to order this Monday, May 17th, 2021, meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. This open meeting of the Northborough Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible, physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which is referenced at the top of our posted agenda for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. This meeting is being conducted remotely using the Zoom conferencing application. Our posted meeting agenda notes the various means by which the meeting can be viewed. That includes the live stream on the YouTube link, which is accessible from the agenda, or is also acceptable if you go to the town website, click on the remote meetings button, and you can find your way there. You can connect to the Zoom webinar link on the agenda. You can connect to Zoom by a phone, audio only, or you can watch your local cable access, Verizon Channel 30 and Charter 192. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and you are visible. Take care not to screen share your computer, and anything you broadcast will be captured by the recording. Permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each agenda item and its speaker. After the speaker concludes the presentation, I will invite board members to offer their comments, questions, or motions. If the agenda is a public hearing, I will invite public comments specific to that matter at that time. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you. If members wish to respond to another member, please request to do so through the chair. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call. Like to now confirm access of all of the participants of this meeting who will be here throughout the meeting. I'm Jason Perro, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, at least for the next five minutes. We also have Leslie Rutan. Julianne Hirsch. Scott Rogers. And new member Kristen Wickstead, welcome Kristen.
Hi, thank you.
We need you to unmute and acknowledge. Yep, thank you. Additionally, we have town staff members, Town Administrator John Kudair.
President, did you get that, Jason?
Yes, I did. Yep. Just one moment, I was being notified of my unstable internet connection. Assistant Town Administrator Becca Meekins. Finance Director Jason Little. Public Works Director Scott Sharpentier. Police Chief William Liver. And we also have the services of Northboro Cable Access, providing some connectivity for our meeting this evening. I believe that includes that when we reach public comment sections of our agenda, I will explain the procedure for participating. And I think that brings us to the beginning of our agenda. So the first item is the approval of the April 12th, 2021 meeting minutes. Those minutes were included in your packet for this meeting. Subsequently, after reviewing those, I had sent an update to Diane Whackel, our Executive Assistant, which she has, I believe, distributed to all of the members. Do I have a motion? Leslie.
Mr. Chair, I move, we approve the April 12th, 2021 Board of Selectmen meeting minutes.
Thank you. And do I have a second? Moved by Leslie Rutan, seconded by Julianne Hirsch, any discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
I just recuse myself from this one since I wasn't really at that last meeting.
You can abstain, Kristen. We register you as an abstention.
Yeah, thank you.
Scott Rogers. Julianne Hirsch. And I, Jason Perro, also vote aye. So the minutes are approved by a vote of four in favor and one abstention. Next item on our agenda, it's past the hour of seven o'clock, is the election of officers each year following town meeting. In town election, we reorganize the board, and for that, we bring in Town Clerk Andy Dowd to conduct the nominations and votes. There are three positions on the Board of Selectmen, the Chair, the Vice Chair, and the Clerk. And I'll now step back and invite Andy to conduct the proceedings. Welcome, Andy.
Thank you, Jason. As you just explained, annually after the election, the board has an opportunity to reorganize itself, so that's why I'm here this evening. And to start, I would ask for nominations for Chair of the Board for the coming year. Scott?
Yeah, thanks, Andy. I nominate Jason Perro as Chair.
Thank you, seconded by Leslie. Do I have any other nominations for Chair of the Board? Hearing none, I'll close the nominations for Chair. Proceed with the roll call vote. Hopefully, I can do it as well as the current Chair. All those in favor, please acknowledge after I read your name. Jason? Leslie? Scott? Julianne? And Kristen? All in favor and unopposed, congratulations. And next, we'll call for nominations for Vice Chair of the Board.
I nominate Julianne Hirsch for Vice Chair.
Motion for Julianne Hirsch. And do I have a second? Scott?
Sorry, it wasn't a second.
Okay, I saw you again go up. Do I have a second? Okay, I don't have any second. Do I have any other nominations for Vice Chair?
Yes, I do. Nominate Leslie Rutan for Vice Chair.
Okay, Leslie for Vice Chair. And do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jason, thank you. Any other nominations for Vice Chair? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close those nominations. All those in favor, by roll call vote, for Leslie Rutan as Vice Chair. Jason? Leslie? Scott? Julianne? And Kristen? All in favor and unopposed, congratulations. And last position is the Clerk of the Board for the coming year. I'll take nominations for that post at this point. Jason?
I nominate Scott Rogers for Clerk.
Seconded by Leslie Rutan. Any other nominations for Clerk? Seeing none, close those nominations by roll call vote. All in favor, Jason? Leslie? Julianne? And Kristen? Unanimous again. Congratulations to all. And Mr. Chair, if I could just take one moment to just thank the election staff and everyone that helped make everything happen on May 11th. We had a fairly busy day as far as town elections go, and it all went well, and that's thanks to the election workers and a special thanks to the Public Works Crew who plays a big role in setting up that event and then getting everything quickly put away so the school can resume session the next morning. And also the folks at Melican, they do an excellent job of keeping the place clean throughout the day, and also they assist with the setup and takedown, and without them, we couldn't make it all happen. So we thank everyone, and of course, my election workers, my Assistant Karen in the office, and it's all appreciated. It's a team effort, so thanks for allowing me that moment.
Thank you very much, Andy. Once again, just a very well-run, well-organized process, both for town election and for town meeting. And so just want to thank you, Karen Wilber, and all the election workers and volunteers, DPW, for their efforts to make all of that happen so successfully and smoothly.
Thank you.
Leslie?
Yeah, I just want to thank Andy too. When I walked in, it was just very, very calm. All the staff are so pleasant. It's very organized. The people who work there obviously enjoy what they're doing and are very happy to see everybody come in and vote, and I just can't, first of all, thank you enough. And also, like you said, the DPW and the Police Department, but also for everyone for voting, and it's very quick. It's easy parking out front. It's very quick to be able to park and run in and vote. You're in and out in basically five minutes. So it's very well-run. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Very good. Thank you, Andy. Appreciate you being here tonight.
You're welcome.
Next item is, it's past the hour of 7:05. We have a public hearing to consider an application to transfer the All Alcoholic Beverages Package Store License from Harsh Incorporated to Sri Jagdamba Mart Incorporated, doing business as Country Discount Liquors for premises located at 411 West Main Street. If we could bring the applicants in, Becca. I'll note that in addition to her duties as Assistant Town Administrator, Becca is also serving as our Zoom meeting host this evening. And is that everyone, Becca?
It's everyone I have on my list. There is a, oh, Sam, okay, I got you. You're with the group. I'll bring you in. Okay, I think that's everybody.
Very good. Thank you, Becca. Let me just get to my spot in the hearing. I'll now open the public hearing if it requires to say that. This is an application for the transfer of the All Alcoholic Beverage Package Store License from
Unmute, unmute and start video is your button to press for start video.
Is everyone okay here? I'm sorry, we might, we might be hearing some, yep, thank you.
Sorry, I'm kind of inept when it comes to the computer.
Sure. We are in receipt of the application to transfer the license. All the documentation has been submitted. I'm sorry, Mr. Pearlman, are you speaking on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, I am.
Yes, why don't you go ahead, introduce yourself, introduce the applicants, and explain the proceeding here?
Sure. If it please the Board, my name is Arthur Pearlman. I represent Sri Jagdamba Mart, Inc. It is seeking a transfer of the Package Store All Alcohol Beverages License currently held by Harsh, Inc., for the premises at 411 West Main Street in Northborough. Sri Jagdamba Mart, Inc. is a mass corporation. Bicabai Patel is the sole officer, director, and shareholder. It is a Massachusetts corporation. Mr. Patel is living at 12 Lori Lane in Charlton, Mass. Mr. Patel has owned and managed businesses located in Walpole, Charlton, and Northbridge, which have liquor licenses. And Bhavesh Patel, who is Bicabai's son, has worked in the business located in Walpole that has a liquor license since 2009. All Mr. Patel's businesses are operated with friends and family, and they'll be doing the same thing at this business in Northborough. Bhavesh Patel will be the manager of this business and spend at least 40 hours a week at this business. The business at 411 West Main Street in Northborough will be open seven days a week. The hours would be from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Monday through Wednesday, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Thursday through Saturday, and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The layout of the store will be as per the floor plan that I submitted with this application, which is the current layout of that store. Both Bicabai and Bhavesh Patel have already been in the liquor business and are familiar with the laws relative to the sale of alcohol, Chapter 138. Additionally, they both have already completed and have their certifications from the Alcohol Dimension Methods Program. They will not only uphold the statutory law, but they'll familiarize themselves with any rules or regulations specific to the town of Northborough regarding the sale of alcohol beverages. I would respectfully request that this application for a transfer of the Package Store All Alcohol Beverages License be approved.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pearlman. Welcome, everyone. We appreciate your being here this evening. I'll turn now just briefly to Chief Liver. Chief, we have the report of Detective Sergeant Brian Griffin. If you would just comment for the record here.
There are no issues.
Very good, thank you. There were, I guess, just one question. Mr. Pearlman, as you were mentioning, the hours of operation, I believe you mentioned 10:00 a.m. on Sunday morning. And I'm just trying to recall what our local bylaw is. I thought we had a provision that required either a noon opening time unless specifically approved by the Board here, so I'm just wanting to get clarification about whether or not that has already been approved for this particular operation. John, would you have any?
I'm not sure. I would defer to the chief if he's aware.
I'm not aware. What was the question again, Mr. Chair?
I know the ABC allows 10, but I'm not sure if your town has a specific regulation separate. I wasn't aware of that, if there is.
I missed what we were looking for. What was the issue?
If there's a 10:00 a.m. opening on Sunday, if the town of Northborough has a specific regulation that overs
not that I'm aware of.
I said 10:00 a.m.'s allowed on Sundays.
It is.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm afraid I had an internet connection drop somewhere in the middle of that. Was there a clarification about the operating hours on Sunday morning?
They can't open it.
We passed legislation for a 10:00 a.m. opening time on Sundays. So 10:00 a.m. is the opening, yes.
It just struck a chord in my mind, and I just wanted to double-check that. Okay, any questions from the members of the Board? Leslie?
Yeah, thank you very much to the applicants. And just for reference, this is the building where the Rooster resides, isn't that correct? I'd like to know exactly the buildings that we're talking about, because 411 West Main Street. And according to Attorney Lieutenant Brian Griffin's letter, the proposed new manager, Mr. Patel, has completed server training and will be on the premises at least 40 hours a week. Is that correct? Okay, just wanted to be sure that that was the case there. So everything else sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Any other questions, Board members? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. If there are any members of the public in attendance, you can indicate a desire to speak to this issue either by raising your hand in the Zoom application or pressing star nine if you are connected to the Zoom application by audio. And a couple more seconds. I do not see anyone indicating a desire to speak to this issue. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I move we close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing by Julianne Hirsch, seconded by Scott Rogers. This is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Scott Rogers? Julianne Hirsch? Leslie Rutan? And I also vote aye. The public hearing is closed. Do I have a motion for action on this?
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board vote to approve the application to transfer the All Alcoholic Beverages Package Store License from Harsh Incorporated to Sri Jagdamba Mart Incorporated, doing business as Country Discount Liquors for premises located at 411 West Main Street.
Moved by Julianne Hirsch, seconded by Leslie Rutan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead?
Aye.
Scott Rogers? Julianne Hirsch? Leslie Rutan? And I, Jason Perro, vote aye, so it carries unanimously. The transfer is approved. Thank you all very much for being here, and we look forward to successful operation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next, it's past the hour of 7:15. We have Kristen Black, Health Agent, for an update on the regional vaccination clinic.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Board of Selectmen members, welcome. Kristen to the Board. Excited to present just a brief update on our COVID vaccination site. We were very busy over there today. We were able to accommodate some children of different town employees today. You know who I'm looking at, so it's really been a great I'm meeting family from all different members, people from in-town, out-of-town, everywhere. So we were vaccinating our 12 to 15-year-olds this afternoon with an afternoon clinic, so that's been really exciting. It feels like maybe the pandemic is really over as we're you know, starting to see younger children come through the door. So our clinic is really broken into two main components at this time. In the morning, we are continuing with second dose clinics. We're doing about 500 to 600 doses a day of Moderna, then we have a hard stop, and we're transitioning to Pfizer, and that's where we're accommodating families, young ones. We really targeted these clinics at the 12 to 15-year-olds with the after-school hours. So last week, we pushed out about 1,700 first-dose appointments geared at these afternoon hours to all of our schools. They were distributed with superintendent letters and principals newsletters, et cetera. Those did fill very quickly. We've added some more for the following week, so just an overall update with the regional clinic. Pfizer appointments are available this week, Monday, or sorry, Wednesday, sorry, let me start. Moderna appointments are available this week, so that's 18 and older, and those, we have a lot of availability, both first or second. So I know some of our residents are starting to switch appointments around because they don't want to drive all the way back really far away, so we can help you locally. Those appointments are available Wednesdays through Fridays, both first and second doses. And then Pfizer appointments are a little harder to come by right now, especially for children in those afternoon hours because they're all getting gobbled up. And so those appointments, we don't have any available right now this week, but we do have some open next Friday and Saturday, so that's May 28th and the 29th. So again, the Saturday clinic is going to run from about 8:00 to 3:00. And then those are going to be opening up shortly today. We're just trying to get those moved over, and we do have appointments on Friday, May 28th. So it's really good news that if any residents in town are having trouble booking an appointment, or maybe you missed your second dose somewhere, and you just are having trouble navigating online, they can definitely call the Health Department. We're scheduling people over the phone, and we also have the ability to like make an appointment for somebody that fits their schedule, even if it doesn't appear online. So please reach out to the Health Department. Our staff are very skilled at dealing with the public and walking through that process. So I think it's really important to note that these afternoon clinics have only been made possible with an extreme help of volunteer vaccinators. So again, there's another family member on here that was over vaccinating at the clinic from one of our Board members here. That's a key vacciner, make it possible. So today, we ran a clinic with 10 vaccination stations for the kids, and seven of those were volunteer vaccinators from the community, either through the Greater Grafton MRC, the Worcester MRC, South Row has their own MRC, or the Region for a MRC. So a huge thanks to those volunteers, volunteer vaccinators in our area that are really making it possible, as well as having to survive the next couple of weeks with these afternoon clinics. We are pulling upon staff, so we do have, like, our Health Department staff is taking turns on helping to staff those clinics. So this is really our final push on trying to offer these appointments and staff these, and you know, 900 dose days today, and then Wednesday through Friday, and you know, we've really ramped up. This is our peak. We're getting a little fatigued, but we're nearly there and we're over the hump. So thanks to everybody for your support, definitely for our volunteers making this possible. So just again, I can't remember where we left off the last time I saw all of you, but we are ramping down the clinic and planning to close the Doubletree site at the end of June. So anybody who receives the first dose will obviously be offered a second dose, but we're sort of condensing those second doses to one day. So we'll be scaling back the clinic, but we are full throttle for the next few weeks. And again, you know, anybody that needs assistance with trying to get in, it's something they can call, and we'll try to make an appointment that works for you, and we are in the world, so we know where the other sites are, when they're doing walk-in hours. For example, the UMass Marlboro Marriott Site has has Pfizer, and they're doing walk-in on certain days. So again, there's lots of availability for vaccine in our area. We just want to let everybody know it's easy. If you have concerns on, you know, the vaccines, especially with children, talk to your pediatrician. But we've had an overwhelming response from our schools, you know, the big shout-out on Northborough, I think you saw the stats. But we've had an overwhelming response from our schools, you know, the big shout out on Northborough, I think you saw the stats that were emailed out. We lead the state for communities over ten thousand, we have the number one vaccination rate. In the entire state of Massachusetts for that, you know, first dose per capita, so we're currently at seventy seven percent. Which is just phenomenal, and then when you really break it into the different age categories, just focusing. On that first dose, because obviously the second or coming Massachusetts has a great return rate. You know, we're sixty five and over, we're over ninety five percent vaccinated, that's as high as they reported on the states we report. Our fifty to sixty four age category, we're ninety two percent vaccinated, our thirty to forty nine year olds. Are beating our fifty to sixty four year olds with a ninety five, greater than ninety five percent vaccination rate. And even our twenty to twenty nine year olds, many which haven't been eligible for all that long, we're at eighty six percent vaccination rate. Our kids, the zero to nineteen, they're currently at twenty one percent, but this data was effective of. May eleventh, so that was before everything opened up for this younger twelve. What is it, the twelve to, you know, fifteen category that opened up later, so. Overall, you know, I don't think we could be in a better position, and so again, the great news is there's lots of availability. And and we're here to accommodate you at the health department in every way you need to make sure vaccination is easy and accessible to all of our residents. So I don't know if you have any questions, they're all my stats, so no.
That's that's excellent, Kristen, it's just very gratifying that the residents of Northborough are, you know, diligent and seeking out and getting themselves vaccinated, but also certainly. You know, kind of a tribute to the staff here and the organization that has gone. Gone on to put these clinics in place and to communicate that to the public to know that they're available and. And get get people processed, so. Once again, just a. Great deal of thanks to you and the coordinating efforts. Through the town and with the other participating communities for this regional vaccination clinic to. Stand that up fairly quickly, take advantage of it and and certainly. Make make the most of it. Any comments by members of the board, Leslie?
Kristen, as usual, thank you, you're really doing a terrific job, and I want to thank John. As well, because he hired you. And really, you're doing a fabulous job and you're so thorough and so detail oriented and so positive throughout this whole thing that. Really cannot thank you enough for all that. One thing you mentioned was the hard stop with Moderna and then moved to Pfizer, what is what is the reason for that?
Don't want to mess up, so I think, you know, Moderna is one product with certain handling requirements, the dosage is different, it's a point five versus the. You know, zero point three for the Pfizer, so it's really just that we clear the tables of that vaccine. We clear the tables of all the stickers and lot numbers and we really get our staff transitioned over. We also, and you know, as as all of you are aware, you know, the key staffing of this is our fire department staff, which have been incredible from our seven communities. And a lot of them, you know, are pretty burnt out after their, you know, eight to three o'clock shift, so we also need just that half hour. Just sort of get them off the tables or help them transition the new team, and then the afternoon session is really moving into a mostly. Volunteer workforce to keep those vaccinations moving.
Okay, and I just had another question too, that the twelve to fifteen year olds that have come in, how, what is their demeanor, are they excited about it, are they nervous? How is that?
It's so thrilling to see the kids because they're right, I want to say the twelve to fifteen year olds are more entertaining than the fifteen to sixteen year olds we saw on the Saturday. No, they're just young kids and it's it's just incredible, they've been excited, they're like, I want sleepovers, so like, I don't know what the parents have promised them or what they read online, but they're like. I want to go to sports, I, you know, they're sick of wearing masks, like all of that, so. It's been really, you know, the kids crack me up, like you forget how really tied in they are to the world and and they're ready to be done with this, like, so. We had some great news coverage from Boston twenty five. Came out and they interviewed and we had some really charismatic kids that were just so excited to get in front of the camera and just say how it was and that this was something they were. Really excited about, so I mean, I was really pumped to have my own thirteen year old there, it was like the first appointment on Thursday and, you know, it was. A really special moment and he was like so excited and I was really excited, he didn't have symptoms, sent him to school, played sports and he'd be great, so. You know, the kids are ready and it's really, it's great to see, you know, they have their way out too.
Fantastic, I've been motivators for them, so that all sounds good, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Kristen?
Just wanted to say that I will be there with my fifteen year old on Wednesday, so I'm really excited about this one.
Very good, any other comments from board members? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much, Kristen, always appreciate the updates and and all the hard work and all the efforts of your staff, the volunteers. And and all the people who are putting so much work into this to make it successful, thank you.
Thanks for your support.
And next up, past the hour of seven twenty, we have Finance Director Jason Little, approval and execution of bonds and bond anticipation notes and approval and execution of advances in lieu of borrowing. Jason, welcome.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, so ultimately, I'm here to ask you to vote to. Accept and execute the documents related to our new bond and notes that were just. Marketed this this past week. On Thursday. These went out to bid, they were bid competitively. And I have the privilege of announcing, which you may not have heard this yet, but we have historically low. Bond rates for that we achieved with this ban, which is. A ban is what's called a note, or sometimes called a note, it's a stands for bond anticipation note. We have an interest rate of point two five three five percent, which means at the end of next year, we'll be only paying point two five three five percent on. That one year loan, and then on our bonds that we issued, they are a rate of point six eight percent. So the these are, if you've, if you look back at our history of interest rates, these are record lows. So. The the bonds are going to be for six million eight hundred forty five thousand dollars, so it's it's a. Fairly substantial amount of money that we're borrowing through this and. It's great news that we have such low rates and, you know, this will reduce. The the interest rate that the town has been expecting to pay for for the next eight to ten years. So. What is the six point eight four five million for? Um, that's primarily a refunding bond where we're refinancing older debt, so. With public debt, we can't just turn around and refinance it on the on the drop of a dime, there has has to be a certain period of time. Before we can legally, what's called call the debt and pay it off and replace it with with new bonds, so it's it's a fairly. Lengthy thing when we make a big commitment to to signing these documents. So. We're basically have about six point two million dollars outstanding on a bond that was issued in two thousand nine and a bond that was issued in two thousand eleven, so between those two. They were three point five four percent and three point oh nine percent, so to replace that with. Point six eight percent is pretty exciting news. Also within that, are we're borrowing for, you know, knowing that the the interest rates were so historically low at this point in time. We looked at everything that we had borrowed short term and and tried to make sense out of what, how can we maximize this, how how many things can we? Borrow for, so we took some of the items that we already had in short term debt and are now permanently financing them in this bond. So those include a sewer inflow infiltration project, a sewer pump station project. The ambulance that was purchased most recently. And the water sewer garage that's being constructed on a school street. That's in addition to the bonds, so. If you had seen the memo that I included in your packet, that we had about eight million dollars of outstanding debt, and so the a reasonable question would be, why is that? Why are we now signing bonds for only six point eight million dollars, so to get from the seven point nine that was outstanding to six point eight. That's a function of how public debt sometimes works and the bids that come in, so basically the difference is a concept called a premium, we get paid a month. A bit of money, you know, when a bidder wants to win. Win the bid, they will add an additional amount to to the to the base price and will. Basically make up for that with higher interest rates later on, so there's a time, the town has to accept the most advantageous bid, which is the lowest cost. Taking into effect this money that we're going to get paid in addition upfront. Taking into account the interest rates and then there's a time value of money component to it, of us getting this money upfront, so. Within our articles at town meeting, I don't know if you guys remember this, but our our town meeting articles are fairly complicated with a lot of extra language about. Being able to reduce the the borrowing if we get a premium, so basically, that's how we get from the seven point nine to the six point eight, so basically. As a result of signing this paperwork, we owe a million dollars less as of as of now than we did last week, so. Basically, that that's the right right re reserve when we go out and and bid on these things, so we reduced the principal that is on the face value of these bonds. So basically, the six point two million becomes five point three million and the the other, the the new. The new things that we're borrowing for are decreasing as well, so. That's the good news about the long term debt, so between eight and ten years, that's going to save us approximately eight hundred thousand dollars. So that's over eight to ten years, so in one year, it's going to be about a hundred thousand dollars, so. Through that refunding, so that's not a hundred percent affecting the general fund, so about. Six hundred thirty eight thousand of that is going to be affecting general fund taxpayers. And then the rest of a hundred eighty six thousand or so is going to be the water sewer rate payers are going to be relieved with with that. So we are also approving short term notes, which include the White Cliffs acquisition. The fire station land in the Asbit water tank, so that's what's included in the three point nine million dollars that you would be approving for the short term notes. In addition to that, I'm here also to ask you to. Vote to approve and accept these bids, there's a fairly lengthy. Vote that was prepared by our bond counsel, our bond counsel is a firm called Lock Lord. And they produced that two page vote that you were going to be accepting at at this meeting. In addition to that, I'm here to also ask you to. Approve advances, these are things that. Were approved but haven't started yet, they were just voted at this year's town meeting, so these advances cannot cross fiscal years, so these would go into effect on July first, this is basically us. Just advancing money to ourself before we actually go out to the market and borrow for these for these two articles, and that's for the dam compliance article in. The water sewer SCADA system, so with that, I'm prepared to answer any questions, and again, I'm I'm thrilled to be able to deliver this news.
Thank you very much, Jason, John, would you care to supplement this great news?
I wouldn't, thank you, Jason, for all the the detail, you know, I always kind of zoom out, big picture. Couple of things I want you to take away from this and anybody watching is when we issued the debt for the library and the senior center project, we had a lower credit rating. So it's a combination of factors, that the interest rates are low, we know that, but our credit rating is at the highest point it's ever been. As part of this process, we did have to get rated again by Moody's, this is when you hear me talking about things like. Policies and reserves and capital investments, all the things that we talk about that are important to keeping our our rating strong. I just want to read from the credit analysis by Moody's, just a couple of lines, it says, Northborough's double A one. Rating maintains a strong credit profile, town benefits from a growing and diverse local economy. And the town's strong fiscal management that includes formal policies, a multi year budget forecasting that helps ensure. The healthy financial position is maintained, the debt burden is favorably low and the unfunded pension and OPEB liabilities remain manageable. So all these things that we do, that we talk about, financial trend monitoring, we talk about during our fiscal policy discussions. These things all translate into actual savings for our taxpayers, and in this case, over eight hundred thousand dollars of existing debt. So again, just a phenomenal outcome for us and very pleased to be able to, you know, with Jason, bring this to the board for your approval and. It's the. It's the the. Consistency. Well, I think was the word that the analyst used with which the town of Northborough maintains policies and limits. And reports and tracks all of the same factors that the crediting rate that Moody's actually tracks, we're able to go right down. We knew exactly where we stood on each of these items and the fact that you all know and we report this out publicly. And everything that we do from policies to implementation supports that. Has a very real benefit, the other thing that I want everybody to keep in mind is, first of all, our level of indebtedness right now, the amount of debt that we're we're. Holding as a corporate entity is at an all time low, it's below four percent. And we are in a position right now to begin our next big project, and our next big project is the fire station building project. And so we have positioned ourselves very well, our level of debt is low, our credit rating is as high that it's ever been. And even in this refinancing, although as Jason said, it's shared between the general fund and the enterprise fund, the bottom line is it creates additional capacity. A hundred thousand dollars of additional capacity in the budgets to take on debt for the next big building project, so we've managed ourselves well and we've positioned ourselves. In the in the best possible way to take on debt associated with the next large project, and as we all know, you have to do that, you have to make. Consistent and regular investments in your buildings and your infrastructure, and we're able to do that. Because we manage ourselves well, we track this and we keep our debt at a level that's sustainable for the general fund and for the enterprise fund, so. The outcome, obviously, you know. Budget nerds like Jason and I, we're thrilled, we cannot be happier with this outcome, and as a board, you know, point two five and point six eight for permanent debt. Refinanced that originally was out at three point five four, three point oh nine percent, that's just phenomenal. Some of it is the market, but a big factor of it is the fact that we have that that excellent bond rating and that that translates. We're pulling down numbers as if we were triple A communities in terms of the interest rates, so. Obviously, we're thrilled, so we happen to answer any questions.
Thank you, John, and to your last point there with the bond rating, we're we're double A one, but regarded in some respects as a triple A. I just want to point out, because we've discussed this before, the only thing that prevents us from actually being rated as a triple A is just essentially the community wealth. If we were a wealthier community than we are now, we could do that, it's it's largely the. Certainly the level we're at, but also the strong financial management of the town that puts us in this position to receive this rating.
Yeah, you have certain, you know, attribute, there are very wealthy communities, frankly, that could afford to be not well managed. Because they just have the sheer wealth and so their credit rating is better, just think about like you as an individual, right, if you're if you're if your friend is really wealthy. But doesn't manage his or her money very well, they're still going to get a better rating than you because they just have the wealth. Where you feel a little bit more modest on the wealth, you need to manage yourself better and more efficiently and effectively. And if you look at just the factors, according to Moody's, they would say we're a double A two community. It's the management and the reserves and the things that we do that pushes up to that to the double A one. We will more than likely never see a triple A rating just because of our social demographics for our community, and that's okay. We are at the best place possible spot for us as a community. You will see also sometimes there's two primary rating agencies for municipal balances, Moody's and Standard and Poor's. And sometimes you'll see a community that is a double A one Moody's, and then they'll go and they'll switch and they'll go to Standard and Poor's and they'll get that triple A rating. A little bit of shopping around. You know, we've always stayed with Moody's and the double A one for us is the equivalent. I believe as a triple A from Standard and Poor's, so the ratings aren't exactly. Equal, but the bottom line, the proof, as they say, is in the pudding, the rates we just got. They're triple A rates, they they don't get any better than that, so we're just very thrilled with that.
Thank you, John, thank you, Jason, for all the work and. Putting us in this position to to benefit from these circumstances, questions from the board, Leslie?
Yeah, Jason and John, thank you very much for this information and and Jason, thanks for all the the detail and explaining these. The different aspects of this, question for you, you mentioned you, we have to. The different aspects of this. Um, question for you. You mentioned you we have to often wait a a certain period of time before we can refund or refinance. Um. And we have one with the two thousand nine bond and the other is a two thousand eleven bond. Is it kind of one of those things where we have to wait too long? You're kind of chomping at the bit because you know that rates are going down? What is the typical amount of time that we have to wait before we can refinance like that?
Generally, it's about 10 years.
Oh.
And that that's what that can be a a complicating factor with some of this stuff if um. If if you have to um, if you have to call it earlier than that, for example, you know, we we had a taxable bond a while back for sewer property that the town was contemplating selling and they they had to issue taxable debt. Because that had to be callable if the town were to, you know, dis- dispose of the asset that we borrowed for. So um typically, it's 10 years for taxable for tax tax exempt debt.
Okay. Okay.
So the big, if I just just chime in, so the big incentive for municipalities is the tax exempt bonds. That's why they're very attractive to investors. The the backside of that is uh unlike your house, you can't just refinance if the rates go down. You you're you're limited to. When and under what circumstances you can do that. And we rely on uh bond counsel and our bond advisors to tell us when we can. We ask, but we have to wait for them to say, okay, now it's eligible. Now you can, now you can do it.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you very much. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Leslie. Any other comments, questions from board members? Scott?
Yeah, just a quick one. Uh, Jason, so we had a conversation a couple of weeks ago. And and I thank you for that because it gave me a primer to then be able to understand the uh the transaction that's happening tonight. So thank you for the work and the and the explanation. Um, it gave me a, uh, I was ready for this note to come in then tonight. So I felt like I got a strong tutorial from you. So thanks.
You're welcome.
Uh, any other comments from the board?
I just, if I can just, I I'm not sure if you folks are aware of this, but. Our bond rating, so when we get raided, uh, it's a phone call with with the analyst. They ask for a bunch of information. They look at all our financials. Then we get a on a phone call with sometimes there's multiple analysts, but they basically can ask you any question at all about your finances. Your debt, your budgets, your tax base. Your a- anything at all that uh they're interested in and they'll probe everything that they can, your unfunded liabilities. Um, you know, your uh even things like your your revenue stream versus your expenditures, how well they're matching up. The beauty of it is we were able to use the financial trend monitoring to point factor by factor that we knew exactly where we stood on each of these with confidence. And um. And, you know, at the end of the process, uh, we made a very, very strong uh case for for the town of Northborough. But the the difficult part of it, it was two days before town meeting. The timing of it couldn't have been any worse. So, you know, sometimes leading up, I think I mentioned to the board, like, you know, leading up to town meeting, like this whole day is blocked off. This is what we're doing on that day. Uh, so the timing was terrible, but again, the outcome is is all good. So we're we're very pleased.
Great. Thank you very much, John. Um. So uh Jason, uh just to. Remind us, uh, we have documents that we need to execute this, the members.
Correct, correct. Yeah, thank thanks for for mentioning that because um you you, the board members will have to um come in to physically sign the documents in person and preferably that will be tomorrow. Um, we we need to FedEx these back to bond council. The thing things are a little different this year with with COVID and people. Working remotely and so forth. Generally, um, we would drive these back to um. You you would sign them the night of the meeting and we'd drive them out to um the bond council's office and drop them off because um there there's so so many documents that are in involved here. So um. People, ju- just full disclosure, the board members will have to come in to to sign these documents.
Tomorrow.
Uh, thank you, Jason.
Yep, yep. And uh just to remind the board members, uh, um. Office hours tomorrow or is it nine to nine AM to seven PM?
Yes.
Yeah.
Eight eight AM to seven PM.
Eight AM, okay. Uh, so I assume we'll have uh an email to us from Diane Whackel when uh when the documents are ready and available for us to sign.
Are the documents ready now, Jason?
Cor- correct, yeah, they're they're.
So they're.
They're with Diane now.
Tomorrow.
Okay, okay, great. Uh, okay, uh, if there are no other questions. Seeing none. All right. Thank you very much, Jason. I appreciate all the work and uh certainly the good news.
Mr. Chair, a motion?
I'm sorry. Yes, you were exactly right. Leslie, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to adopt the vote as prepared by Lock Lord as bond counsel relating to the approval of the town's May twenty twenty one bonds. And June twenty twenty one notes as presented by Finance Director Jason Little.
Second.
Moved, I'm sorry, I'm experiencing uh internet connection here. Uh, I understand moved by Leslie, seconded by Scott Rogers. Uh, this is a roll call vote. Uh, Kristen Wickstead?
Hi.
Uh, Julian Hirsch?
Hi.
Scott Rogers?
Hi.
Leslie Ratan?
Hi.
And I, Jason Pro, also vote aye, carries unanimously for approval. Uh, do I have another motion, Leslie?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move the vote board vote to approve and execute advances in lieu of borrowing effective July one twenty twenty one. Relating to the borrowing authorizations approved at the May one twenty twenty one meeting and as presented by Finance Director Jason Little.
Second.
Uh, I have a motion by Leslie Ratan, seconded by Kristen Wickstead. Uh. This is a roll call vote. Uh, Kristen Wickstead?
Aye.
Julian Hirsch?
Aye.
Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Leslie Ratan?
Aye.
And I, Jason Pro, vote aye. That carries unanimously as well. Uh, that concludes that bit of business. Is that right? Anything else? Nothing else.
That does it.
Okay, very good. Uh, thank you very much. Appreciate it. So now pass the hour of nine twenty, I'm sorry, seven twenty five PM. And we have uh. Rick Leaf, Northborough Affordable Housing Corporation, and Norm Corbin. Historic District Commission. Presentation of the Robert H. Keen Award as presented to the Project Gale team. By the Preservation Massachusetts for the Gale Store Habitat for Humanity Project. Do we have Rick and Norm?
I'm here.
Hello, Norm?
How you doing? Rick's coming in.
I am here also.
Hello, Rick?
I'm unmuted. Let me start my video here.
There we go.
Ah, there I am. For better or worse. Yeah, um, Norm and I just wanted to bring the board uh up to date. Right here. So start.
There you are, yes.
I know I was here somewhere. Yeah, we just want to update the board um on this award that uh we received from Preservation Massachusetts and the project. That we had done jointly with Habitat for Humanity to convert. The two buildings, Dr. Trinity Church, into uh four units of affordable housing. Uh, the project was completed. Um, in two thousand nineteen. And then through Norm's uh working with us. Uh, nominated the project at Preservation Massachusetts for this award, which we received in two thousand twenty. I want to start by. I just reading for you the inscription on the certificate. It says Preservation Massachusetts is honored to present the Robert H. Keen Junior Award. To the redevelopment of the historic Gale Store for Affordable Housing, Northborough. In recognition of projects that meld collaborative partnerships. With creative and cutting edge ideas for the rehabilitation and active reuse of historic buildings. Preservation Massachusetts recognizes the exemplary efforts of Habitat for Humanity, Metro West, Greater Worcester. Northborough Affordable Housing Corporation. Trinity Church. The town of Northborough. Assabit Valley Regional Technical High School, Algonquin Regional High School. And the dedicated team members. October twenty second. Two thousand twenty. Um, I think the key that the the two key factors here are collaborative partnerships. And creative and cut of cutting edge rehabilitation and active reuse. Um. The brief background here is the Trinity Church owned the two buildings that became the subject for this uh restoration. They approached the Affordable Housing Corporation late in two thousand fifteen to see if we had an interest in pursuing a project to create affordable housing there. They were willing. To sell the buildings to us at a very favorable cost if we would agree to create affordable housing in the buildings. Um. Our group of volunteers at the housing corporation doesn't have the capacity to do this kind of work on our own. But we had been. Discussing with Habitat for Humanity for about a year, the possibility of a joint project. And when this idea was presented to us. We contacted Habitat for Humanity. And their people, their project manager and engineer came out. Uh, took a look at the building, said this was definitely doable. And that a lot of things happened in terms of moving the project forward, not the least of which was the active involvement of the town of Northborough. In terms of the help that we got from the planning department, the building department. And the engineering department and figuring out what had to be done, what needed to be done, what permitting was necessary. And then through the support of the Community Preservation Committee and the selectmen. Were able to. Uh, have community preservation funds allocated towards this project to offset fifty percent of the cost of the project. And Habitat for Humanity. Agreed to raise the other fifty percent either through their own fundraising or through volunteer labor or donation of materials in kind. The project started actively. Sometime in the mid to late two thousand sixteen timeframe. Uh, the small house was completed, two units, mid two thousand eighteen. And the large house, which was the Gale General Store, was completed in early two thousand nineteen. So the reason the town of Northborough and Trinity Church recognized in this award was for their partnership in doing this. The reason that Assabit Valley Regional Technical High School was recognized. Is when Habitat for Humanity was interested in finding volunteer labor, they went to the superintendent at Assabet. And he was thrilled to be able to provide students to do in the smaller house, all of the electrical work. All of the carpentry, all of the plumbing and all of the HVAC work. It was a wonderful onsite project for them. In fact, uh, the large Gale Store was mainly done by habitat professionals and volunteers, but it was finished work needed to be done in the large house. They hate the Gale Store. And when the Assabet students were done with their work in the small house, they came in and did some finished work in the large house. So they got great hands-on experience in the different disciplines they were learning in school. I think what they also learned was we had them present. The day that we dedicated the small house, when the two families came and spoke. About how incredibly grateful they were to be able to have this beautiful new, clean, safe housing to live in. And I think the the students understood they'd accomplished a lot more than just learning things about carpentry and plumbing. And electrical work, but they had done something really significant for families that needed this kind of housing. And Algonquin students came over, they helped also on the Gale Store, they actively participated. In exterior work as far as insulation and siding. So it was really a great community effort. The habitat model is the days that volunteers are working, habitat provides lunches. And most, if not all of the restaurants and stores in Northborough provided food. All of the pizza shops, all of the sandwich shops, Lowe's Market. Specialties, everyone brought food over at some point during the project. So not only was the town involved from its own high school and from its involvement with Assabet. But a lot of the people who provide uh food and meals and towns got involved also. So this really was a great model of a collaborative effort across a lot of different platforms. And certainly, um. It was a great reuse of the uh of the project. And now we have four families living in those two homes. That really are are grateful for that. So that's kind of the background of what happened here. I'm going to let Norm speak for a couple of minutes about some of the interesting history behind uh especially the Gale Store.
Sure. Um. So some of the highlights from the nomination documentation that we sent in, um, I'll focus on the Gale Store because that's such a unique building. I mean, it's really, there's only built one building like that in the town of Northborough, and I'm glad we're able to say that. The building was originally used as a Northborough stage coach stop upon the old Boston Post Road. It also contained a Northborough post office. It was Captain Cyrus Gale's general store starting around eighteen thirteen. And he sold it to his son Cyrus Junior, who continued to run it until the nineteen hundreds. So now I'm going to just take a little bit of, get a little bit of history about the Gale family. Um, the Gale family, they were very prominent and very influential in town of Northborough throughout the eighteen hundreds. Captain Gale, he moved to Northborough in eighteen thirteen, acquired a two hundred acre farm and used the. His farm produce and his milk and his butter, they were all sold at his store on Main Street. Captain Gale was also founder of the North. Excuse me, of the Northborough Bank in uh eighteen fifty four. As a philanthropist, he was one of the first benefactors of the Northborough Free Library, and he was the founder of the Gale Fund. The Gale Fund was a a town fund to help the poor. His son Cyrus Gale Junior followed very closely in his father's footsteps. He was prominent and influential also in Northborough. Assabet Park was his gift to the town as well as the Northborough Free Library Building. As a historic preservationist, I'm really appreciate that the CBA, the CPA funding was available for this project to really keep this historic view on Main Street. Uh, it was one building that was a potential tear down. And now we have a beautiful building that we've had with families living in it, and I'm really pleased with the result. So that's a. That's my two cents on the. On the project.
Just to to end the discussion here, a couple of weeks ago, I brought a framed copy of the certificate in. I gave it to Diane. And uh, I'm sure she and John will find a good place to place it uh in Town Hall. Um. Basically, uh Preservation Massachusetts sent us a lot of copies of the certificate. In his infinite wisdom, Norm was able to go out and get them framed. And the Historic District Commission picked up the cost of the framing, which we're very appreciative of for doing that. The other other thing I'll add was that when we were doing the demolition work in the Gale Store, as some of the interior walls came down, they discovered. Handwritten ledgers and invoices from Cyrus Gale dated anywhere from eighteen fourteen to eighteen nineteen. When we found them, we gave the Historic Society a call and. Ellen Racine came over, she was just thrilled to take those documents, preserve them. They're a display over the Historic Society now, so that was kind of a benefit. We didn't even know what was going to happen. It was really cool to hold in your hand. Documents that basically Cyrus Gale had handwritten back in the early eighteen hundreds. So uh, it was a great project. And uh, Norm and I are very appreciative of of all the support the town gave to this project, not just in terms of funding. But in terms of this, a lot of the staff support that came through, like I said, planning, building, engineering. There was a lot of things that had to happen to make this happen, and everybody in town really worked well uh with Habitat to make this happen. So. Thank you all for that. And it was a, it was a wonderful achievement for all of us.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Norm. Uh, appreciate your being here uh to to give us this information. Uh, it certainly was uh. A huge success story um in in renovating these structures and making them available for affordable housing. Um, and certainly the collaboration through Habitat uh for Humanity. Uh, having so many people in town uh participating at one point or another uh to actually do some of the work and have that hands-on opportunity. Um, uh. It it just makes it that much more meaningful, I think, uh, for people to have had a, you know, an opportunity to participate in creating something like this in their town. Uh, any uh questions or comments, members of the board? Leslie?
Yeah, what a, there's so many people that were involved in this particular project, and it really, really was a wonderful way to um. Update and provide housing for individuals and using the CPC funds and so forth. Uh, well, I went over there a couple of times to check out the progress and a couple of things. Um. Well, first of all, just the Assabet students were just so impressive, the way they were going about their business and really seemed interested in being there and doing a good job. You could tell they were taking a lot of pride. In what they were doing to contribute to this. Um, on one of the visits, there was a. Um. What do you call it? A planting, a burial of a of a time capsule? Do you remember what was in that, Rick or Norm? I'm I'm trying to remember. I watched them bury it, but I can't remember what was actually in that. Do you think it was any of the documents that were in the the old Gale Store? I'm not sure what went in there.
I'm not sure what went in there. I'm pretty sure that Ellen Racine took all of the. I'm not sure what went in there. I'm pretty sure that Ellen Racine took all of the Gale documents and brought them back to Historic Society and preserved them. I don't think they ended up in the time capsule, but I'm not sure what's in there.
Yeah, I think it was in front of the, I think it was on the land in front of the smaller buildings. I don't know if Jason, if you remember, if you were over there on that same day.
We had the, I recall the, kind of the key conveyance ceremony. We had that day with representatives from Habitat for Humanity and and certainly our town people involved. Julianne, I believe you spoke at that that particular occasion on behalf of the board, so. Just very gratifying project. It's the kind of thing, and it literally serves as an example of what this program accomplishes and certainly gives us momentum for additional projects we might encounter in the future.
Sure, absolutely.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. Rick, Norm, thank you both very much. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this and certainly nice to receive this acknowledgement from Preservation Massachusetts for what a great project it really was. Good night.
Good night.
Very much, thank you.
This brings us to reports, and we will begin with our newest select board member, Kristin Wickstead.
Hi, happy to be here. Thanks, everyone, for voting. Whoever you voted for, elections are great. It was a really well-run election, and I'm happy to be here. Thanks.
Thank you, Kristin. Julianne?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I would also like to thank all the residents who voted on May eleventh. The participation in town government takes a lot of time and effort, and I think we're all better off for for your, the residents' active involvement. All of you out there have opinions and good ideas, and moving forward, I will do my best to listen and work on your behalf. And I'd also like to welcome Kristin, who is our new member, and say that I look forward to your participation on the board. And I have one announcement, and that is that the Northborough Helping Hands Association has kicked off its fourteenth annual backpack drive. The fundraiser goal is for four thousand dollars, which will enable them to donate new backpacks and school supplies for the students in Northborough Public Schools. And then I actually have a couple of housekeeping questions. The first one is, as we heard from Kristin, restrictions are rapidly decreasing on our ability to get back to normal. And one of the things that I'm, I'm I have questions about is when we will be going back to in-person meetings? And are we going to try to keep a hybrid, you know, a hybrid Zoom model so that, that what has become a very popular way of participating can endure as we go back to in-person meetings? Do we have any information about that yet, or?
John, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. So the governor just made some pretty significant announcements today with regard to restrictions, and I believe he's going to end the state of emergency on June fifteenth, which means we're probably going to do the same at your meeting on June fourteenth. So we are heading back to normal. As of today, May seventeenth, Town Hall is open, open to the public. We've made physical modifications to the building for the safety of the public and staff. Other, other buildings, Senior Center Library are phasing in and coming online. Again, there are still limits. So we're rapidly phasing out. We're also trying to get the announcements today were pretty substantial, and so it's going to have repercussions and implications for staffing. So Beck and I met this afternoon to start those discussions about how we're going to modify things. The MMA has been working with the governor's office. And the question is, you know, how much, how much of the emergency provisions for remote meetings and participation, how much of that is going to be maintained? On recent calls, that's been the number one question. And from the governor's office, they said they're, they're working on it, and they're going to get some guidance back over the next couple of weeks about that. In terms of locally, that's going to be, I would imagine, a discussion probably at our next meeting. There is some technology issues with all Zoom. We've got that down pat, all in person, got that down pat. Hybrid is a little bit different story. We're going to have to, we're going to have to look at some some, some different technology. But we're also going to get, I'll have to get some clear authorization from the state as to what they're going to allow to continue along those lines. So I guess the answer is stay tuned. It's going to be a discussion probably over our meetings in June.
Okay. Sorry?
I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't mean to test.
What you're hearing is a lot of support for a hybrid-type model.
Well, first, we need to see what the regulatory framework is, but then I, you know, when we say we needed to find what we're talking about, and we say a hybrid model, and how is it all going to work? So yeah, we're going to have to have some discussions on that.
Okay. Okay, and my second question is, we talked about setting a policy for getting back to people who send emails. That was discussed at our last meeting, and I, I was hope, I thought we were maybe going to come up with something. This meeting is, at the very least, can we have the chairperson respond and say, you know, we acknowledge that we received your email?
Yes, yeah, this is, yes, it's been a little disorganized, and I take responsibility for some of that. I think in the past I had indicated that I would respond to some of these emails. If nothing more than to acknowledge they've been received. In some cases, I have done exactly that. In other cases, I think we've had some emails where, for example, it may have been reporting a concern about truck traffic, some particular incident. And I may, I took for granted that it was being copied to some of the town staff members in addition to the Board of Selectmen. And I was wrong about that. I would go back, look at the email a little bit later, and find that it had only been sent, for example, to the board members, but not to John, not to Scott Sharpantier, DPW Director, and perhaps not to Chief Lider. So I'll be more diligent in the, in the coming days about when those emails come in, to take a look at them, see who is receiving it, who's not receiving it, to make an acknowledgement to the person sending it, and if necessary, to forward it to additional town staff who need to be apprised of it.
Thank you very much. That'd be great. Okay, and that, you said something that is another question of mine. People have said to me that it is a little bit difficult to find the traffic webpage. And one of the, one of the really easy ones that is, is so user-friendly is the COVID update. Is there any way we could, we could just use a similar model with the traffic webpage? I guess that would go to our, our technology people, but can, should I? Does everyone agree that maybe we could make it a little easier, or? What's your thoughts on that?
Scott Sharpantier, Public Works Director, did you have a comment?
Mr. Chairman, through the chair, so the transportation safety webpage is the top link, the top permanent link on the DPW webpage. So if anybody has a transportation safety concern, just go to the Department's Public Works, and it is the top link on a permanent link to the left side of the webpage.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll just keep reinforcing that with people then, I guess.
Julianne, Julianne, hold on for a sec. John, John.
I did just want to mention, the, the way that the, the website is designed through open.gov, the company that we use is the coronavirus, the red banner at the top is meant for basically what, emergency announcements, and so that's what is dedicated to coronavirus. That's why that stands out because it's emergency information basically that we're providing. That's what that's laid out. So I just wanted to. So we wouldn't have multiple red banners. It's, if there's something emergency, that's where you would find it on the webpage.
Oh, no, I was thinking, you know, on the, on the homepage where it's, it's like some town news, and it says coronavirus update, not the emergency part.
Yeah, we're always posting, and so the town news, if you, if you get on the webpage, you'll see, it's always, you know, it's like everything that gets posted, whatever was there prior gets pushed down. So it's, it's a constantly evolving freshness of, of the news. That's the point of the homepage. And then on the, on its department-specific pages, that's where you'd find, you know, the information, like obviously the traffic safety webpage would be DPW, and it's right at the prominent, permanent link at the top, so.
Okay, well, we'll just keep telling people to go to the DPW site. Okay. And then I think I just have one more question, and that is, everyone is, you know, waiting to see when Master Plan Implementation Committee is going to meet, and I was wondering if we have a schedule for that.
I don't believe we have a schedule at the moment. I think part of it is the availability of town staff members who have been fully occupied with events leading up to town meeting. Now that we've cleared town meeting, we can step back and see what the capacity is. Obviously, it's going to require the assistance of, in all likelihood, the town planner to be a lead staff liaison for that effort. And as you know, with a lot of the work going through the planning board and the development of bylaws for town meeting, the town planner has been more than fully occupied through this point. So we do expect to launch that work, I would say, fairly soon. We just need to step back and regroup after town meeting to see what, what needs to be done as a next step.
Yeah, through the chair, I met with the town planner this afternoon on this topic. I know it's on your agenda later to designate your, your new board individual for that, for that committee, but we're looking to get that going in June, so.
Oh, great, yeah, because, because summer vacation comes, and if there could be at least one or two meetings before.
Yeah, there's always, it's, it's, it's a, it's a tough time of year in general, especially now, we've got a lot of, I think I was commenting before, we've got a lot of staff that has been unable to take vacation. So there was, it's kind of a buildup, but we're looking to get this going in June.
Excellent. Thank you so much, and that ends my report.
Thank you, Julianne. Scott Rogers?
Nothing new to report. We've covered a couple of items that I was going to mention already, and then we have some items coming up on the agenda, so I'll, I'll wait for those.
Thank you, Scott. Leslie Rattan?
First of all, I'd like to thank the Community Affairs Committee for organizing and planning the annual town cleanup. I think one, if not both, days were good weather days to get out there and clean up, and I think, I think a lot of people were out there. I looked all over the place, and there were bags everywhere. So I do want to thank the DPW also for doing all that pickup. Do you have any idea how many bags you picked up, Scott?
We filled the thirty-yard dumpster.
Is that right? Wow.
The big roll-off dumpster, we generally empty it before town cleanup day. And this year was like none I've seen before. We filled it.
Wow, impressive. Impressive. So I want to thank the residents for all the work on that and that committee for organizing that and arranging for the the food and so forth at the drive-through, the senior center. So that was very nicely done. Also, I just wanted to mention that I took part in interviews for a firefighter-perimedic position with Assistant Town Administrator Becca Meekins and Fire Department Members Captain Desatell and Firefighter Perimedic Paul Saper. Those went very, very well, and we made some recommendations and ranked the individuals that we interviewed. And currently, Chief Franty is reviewing those recommendations. It was very, a lot of fun, and some very, very nice applicants. I also want to thank everyone who worked on town meeting. I know we talked this over with Andy already, but he and Assistant Town Clerk and the Police Department and DPW, all, everyone had a, had a part in this. And seeing all the, the voting booths, if you want to call them that, you know, I had to be separated, so there's a little bit of a different setup than we typically have, but it was just very, very nicely done. And I want to thank everyone who attended and who voted and just took the time to do their part. It's your time to speak. That and town meeting were two very important things to have happen. So I wanted to thank everyone for that, and I wanted to congratulate Kristin Wickstead on her win, and also Julianne Hirsch. So welcome to the board, and I'm looking forward to working with, with you all, so. Thank you very much, and that ends my report.
Get myself unmuted. Thank you very much, Leslie. I have a couple of items I wanted to, to mention. One, welcome again, Krista. Congratulations, and Julianne, congratulations on your reelection to the board. I also want to thank all the candidates who stepped up for participation in this year's town election. It takes a little bit of effort to, to go out there and make that effort, and we certainly appreciate everyone who's looking to become involved. Want to thank the voters for their participation. This is an excellent turnout this year, largest I think I've seen since I've been here probably, so. That says a lot about the, the community in wanting to be involved. And I want to thank former Selectman Tim Kaling for his service on the board for the last three years. Tim was a very productive and constructive member. He led the initiative for the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. He stepped up as a volunteer for the Master Plan Implementation Committee. I just appreciate his efforts over these past few years. With respect to annual town meeting, again, town moderator, town clerk and his staff, town administration, public works, public safety, and all the board and committee members, and certainly the citizens who were present. We had a cool, relatively clear and very windy day. One of those pop-up tents nearly clubbed me to death as I was standing up to speak the Article Four, but fortunately, didn't get, didn't get struck by that. Just appreciate everyone being out there. Certainly, probably better circumstances than last year in mid-July heat, so. And certainly managing to get it done on time within this year's fiscal year cycle. So that's certainly a benefit to town staff in being able to move forward in with plans. I want to also mention that, once again this year, due to restrictions on large public gatherings, we'll be doing a virtual Memorial Day observance. And this past weekend on Saturday, Post Two Thirty Four was out there to do the procession through the different town monuments. Honor Guard led by Bruce Goldsmith had some representation with Legion Riders. Justin Souza, our Veterans Agent, was present, Karen Brewster for the Two Thirty Four Auxiliary. And additionally, Terry Underwood and Eagle Scout Ben Newman providing video services to record that, the recordings of those presentations and words spoken at each of the monuments, in addition to some additional commentary from a few people will be kind of knit together to provide a video observance that will be available shortly, on or perhaps shortly before Memorial Day this year. One hopes that this time next year, we'll be able to actually gather in person and do it the way we're accustomed to and do it the way we were preferred to do it. And finally, I just wanted to mention, I believe the Scholarship Committee at the moment, due to a couple of members not having renewed their appointments, is currently under quorum and cannot conduct any business until they have at least a quorum of members on board. So if anyone has an interest, I certainly invite you to step up and volunteer for the Scholarship Committee to let us certainly do the work that that committee does to assist some of our high school students as they proceed with their college plans and encounter the college financing challenges that they do. And I believe that concludes my report. Yes, Leslie?
Mr. Chairman, I had one more thing. I kind of combined town meeting and Election Day kind of into one big.
Sure, Leslie, go ahead.
One thing I did want to mention is I was very happy to see that the K-28 budget passed and that there is free full-day K. Now in Northborough, I think that it's important. Now in Northborough, I think that it's important um, that both Northborough and Southborough have parity. And that things are as many things like that are the same in both communities. So I think that that, that was a good initiative um, that was underway, and I'm very happy to see that that passed. I thought it was a very successful town meeting in that regard.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
Uh, John, anything?
Uh, just again, uh, making sure folks know, uh, town hall is open for business in person. It was really actually quite refreshing to see people in the building and uh, talking to staff. Uh, we have had to make some modifications to the building, as I said, uh, but still a very personal uh, experience. So if you need anything, uh, we are, we've always been open for business, but we're open physically now. So come on and see us if there's anything we can do for you. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Uh, next up on our agenda is uh, public comment, so let me just go over a couple of things uh, prior to that. Uh, for public comment, if you are participating to the Zoom application, you can raise your hand to be recognized. If you're connected by audio through the Zoom application, you can press star nine to have the effect of raising your hand. The board uh, will not um, typically engage in any debate or deliberation of any issues that are raised. We will take them under advisement if there are relatively straightforward informational questions that town staff can answer. We will do our best to try to um, be responsive. Um, may I ask everyone, as always, uh, please, uh, when you're speaking, uh, do so professionally and constructively. Observe some decorum. Uh, everyone participating here is uh, doing so out of a a desire to uh, provide some contribution to the town. Um, and so we're certainly willing to hear whatever issues or concerns people have. We just ask you to present that information in a responsible manner. So having said that, uh, if you have a desire to be heard for public comment, please raise your hand. And I first have uh, Tim Kalen. Tim, let me bring you in. Uh, hello, Tim.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just a quick comment. Um, just a quick comment on the the election. Um, it may seem like eons ago, uh, but it was just a couple of years ago that we were holding the elections at the uh, four elementary schools. And just recently, we consolidated uh, all the uh, the polling into to the middle school. Um, there was concern by parents about the safety of of their kids. And that effort was was spearheaded by Leslie Rutan, so I just wanted to call and just thank Leslie for uh, leading that effort to to get the polling place into one location. Um, you know, out of concern for for our kids, so I just wanted to say thanks to Leslie for that. And then uh, just a quick comment, uh, Jason, thanks for the uh, the quick finance geek out. Uh, I have my finance calculator out and was calculated interest rates along with you. Uh, just tremendous work. Thank you very much. Uh, thanks. Um, that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Sorry, a little slow on the uh, control panel here. Uh, next up, I have Lisa Mocelli. Bring you in, Lisa.
Uh, good evening, Jason. Um, I just wanted first start out to congratulate uh, Kristin.
Lisa, could you, I'm sorry, could you uh, state full name and address, please?
Sorry, Lisa Mocelli, thirteen Maple Street.
Thank you.
I'd like to congratulate Kristin on winning her first seat uh, on the Board of Selectmen. And uh, to further congratulate Julianne Hirsch for winning over fourteen hundred votes. I hope that will get her some opportunities to be on interview committees uh, in the next three years and that she might be even picked for the MPIC. Um, I had a question, and I don't know if if you actually made it open earlier to uh, Jason Little. Um, he had mentioned something about a sewer property that uh, had a sewer property uh, for sale or to sale. Um, was that the one that had to do with the Marlboro Sewer and Water um, contract? Or was that something different, something in the old days?
Uh, John, do you want to?
Yeah, I can respond to that. That it's uh, the Heitzmer property that the town purchased in two thousand and six. Uh, in part for uh, potential use of subsurface disposal as part of a potential expansion to the Marlboro Westley Treatment Plant.
So yeah, that was, so was it H E I T S M E R?
Uh, I believe so, yeah. Heitzmer.
Yes, that sounds right.
I think it's H A I T S M A.
Okay, thank you so much. Good evening.
Thank you, Lisa. And uh, not sure if this is a repeat, I'm going to lower hands and ask you to raise hands once again. Uh, because I wasn't certain if uh, a raised hand I was seeing was uh, left over. If anyone wishes to comment, please raise your hand. Got one. Uh, Laura Zaitin, uh, bringing you in, Laura. Uh, hello, Laura. Uh, Laura, we're not hearing you if you're on mute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
No, sorry about that. Laura Zaitin, seventeen Franklin Circle. I just wanted to say how excited I am that Julianne was reelected and welcome to the board, Kristin. I'm excited to have you here. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you, Laura. And uh, anyone else for public comment? And hearing none, public comment is concluded. Thank you all. Uh, we next move on to new business. First item is acceptance of funds from Amazon pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter Forty Four, Section Fifty Three A. For traffic mitigation around Bartlett Street Warehouse Facilities. And uh, John, would you care to uh, introduce us?
Sure. So as uh, as you know, we had uh, uh, taken comments and concerns from residents uh, working with town staff. Uh, and we sat down with Amazon several months back to discuss some uh, potential um, pedestrian, particularly pedestrian uh, safety improvements that could be done out there. Uh, Amazon is under no obligation to uh, provide any funding. Uh, the opportunity to negotiate mitigation funding would have been at the point at which the the project was uh, approved by the Planning Board. Uh, and they did negotiate some mitigation in terms of uh, some in intersection redesign at uh, Bartlett and Cedar Hill Road. But anyway, uh, we were able to get uh, Amazon to agree to uh, put some uh, flashing pedestrian uh, uh, beacons. Uh, both at the crosswalk in front of the high school as well as the Stirrup Drive. Uh, there'll be some um, some uh, bike lane work that's done there. And we're also looking at um, conducting a traffic engineering uh, study for the section of Bartlett near Algonquin Regional High School. So uh, essentially, the the projects that we had contemplated to discuss with Amazon totaled uh, just under eighty thousand dollars. Uh, Amazon agreed to uh, to provide those mitigation funds, and we have actually uh, physically received the check. So all you need to do tonight under Mass General Law is to vote to accept those funds. Uh, so we can uh, begin expending those. Scott has already uh, begun engineering work uh, to get those projects moving. So we don't lose any time uh, as soon as the weather broke. Um, so that's uh, what's before you this evening, just to accept those funds so we can expend them for the stated purposes. And again, uh, in your packet is a memo from Scott, uh, uh, Charpentier, the DPW Director. Uh, uh, outline what would be done and sort of a timetable for those things. And uh, Scott, um, would you uh, please uh, tomorrow, uh, please put that up on the traffic safety webpage? So people can see that update in case anybody's interested in in viewing it.
Absolutely.
So uh, so in terms of tonight, we're looking for acceptance of the fund so we can move forward with uh, with the actual work.
Thank you very much, John. Uh, questions or comments from members of the board? Kristin?
So, um, on the, on the memorandum, it says um, a wheelchair ramp at Maple Street. Um, is proposed. Could you explain that a little bit? That was confusing to me.
Uh, certainly through the chair, the um, one of the crosswalks we have is right at the Algonquin Regional High School. It is on the Maple Street side. The Algonquin High School side has an accessible wheelchair ramp. The other side of the crosswalk just uh, uh, but discharges to to dirt. So in order to have a compliant uh, crosswalk, we have to have a wheelchair ramp and a level landing so that uh, folks can use that crosswalk safely.
Okay, but the um, but there's no sidewalk over there. So it will just be like a a wheelchair ramp that goes onto like the grass or something?
There'll be a a level landing wheelchair ramp with a detectable warning strip, uh, two flared uh, slope sections. And then a level landing for a wheelchair to 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 sit and wait.
Okay.
Yes. There is no sidewalk on that section of Maple Street.
Right, right, yeah. Okay. Um, and it says here, um, on the, on the first item. Um, the this, there will be signage, improved signage at the intersection of Lyman Street and Bartlett Street. This includes a stop ahead sign on Lyman Street. As well as a four ninety five Trailblazer sign across from Lyman Street with a double Chevron. That's a, that's an arrow, right? Like a big, is it like a big reflective double arrow? Is that what the Chevron is?
Yeah, the the Chevron is a um, uh, is a warning sign. It's a yellow sign with a black um, arrowhead. You see them when you're going on Otis Street around that sharp curve below um, below Bavarian's Farm. Uh, those are Chevrons, a double Chevron at that location helps indicate drivers, it's it's a driver that that is a teed intersection. Um, and the the Trailblazer sign is a four ninety five interstate symbol with an arrowhead. You see that we installed one at uh, Cedar Hill and Bartlett Street, just directing trucks that the direction to get to four ninety five is down that Cedar Hill. So when the trucks are coming up Lyman Street, they'll be sitting at that stop line, and they'll see the four ninety five uh, sign with an arrow pointing to the right, which is the Trailblazer sign.
Right. No, that's great. Um, I think that'll be really helpful. And the the damaged guard rail and the posts will be removed also, which will be nice. Um, and the bike lanes, that was the other question that I had. Um, so it says the bike lanes will end at Algonquin. Am I reading that right?
Yeah, we're not.
They'll start from, I'm sorry, from the town line in Marlboro, right? So they'll go all the way down most of Bartlett Street, and then they end at Algonquin. So two questions there. Will they, will they just end at Algonquin? And if so, I'm not sure I understand why. And then also, will they be on just one side of the street or both?
Bike lanes are required on both sides of the street. Uh, cycles of bicycles are um, um, vehicles, and they need to travel in the direction of traffic. So there'll be bike lanes on both sides. There are bike lanes on both sides of Forest Street, which is the section of the extension of Bartlett into Marlboro. Um, those bike lanes will continue into Northborough along Bartlett Street. Um, I selected Algonquin as a reasonable terminus location. It gets very narrow when you get past Maple Street approaching Route Twenty. Um, especially when you're going past uh, the the driveway queue for St. Bernadette's. Um, the logical location and the logical terminus would be a destination point, um, which could be Algonquin. We've hired, we're we're in the process of hiring a traffic engineer to do the layout and specifically uh, design what travel lanes are required as well as shared lanes. One thing I want to avoid is uh, to the greatest extent practicable, is shared lanes around a high school. Um, high schools typically have new ru- new drivers, new drivers are not accustomed to shared lanes. If anybody on the call or watching the watching the the meeting has has driven through Cambridge and Somerville. Shared lanes are are a bit of a challenge at times, and especially for new drivers. So I want to make sure what we put out there is safe and has a logical terminus on the Northborough side.
Okay. Um, and then what was the new thing that just got sent to us at the last minute? I didn't have time to print that out. Can someone remind me? There was like?
To through the chair, if I may. Uh, so uh, we did receive uh, just unrelated, well, related, but not related to what's before you tonight. The only thing you're before you tonight is to accept the the donation that Amazon is making to the town of eighty thousand dollars, which is appreciated. Uh, but I did ask Amazon to give us an update on uh, on where they uh, where they are with uh, in terms of improving some of the traffic uh, coming in and out of their site. And uh, a few things have happened. Uh, Scott, uh, working with Scott, we have permitted them to put some additional signage across the street from the driveway to make it more visible for their drivers. They've also chosen to um, to uh, stripe and uh, and paint the driveway entrance uh, to better uh, demarcate uh, the appropriate uh, turns. Um, and then uh, they continue to work on long-term options. Uh, we've discussed at your prior meetings, uh, the geo fencing uh, option that they have. Uh, which is a GPS based software that allows them to better route trucks. So they're working on developing uh, not just for Northborough, but uh, for the Northeast region. Um, that software wasn't originally uh, conceived of and designed for how they're trying to use it now. Uh, but that's going to take them, uh, they think probably about two months to to fully develop. In the meantime, uh, working again with them, uh, we were able to get them to agree. They're going to put a a flagger at the end of the driveway, basically somebody there making sure trucks go the direction they're supposed to go in. And that's obviously a temporary solution while they work out some of their long-term uh, solutions. The signage is uh, is obviously a big uh, piece of it. Uh, the permanent signage, uh, Scott, is the permanent signage in yet? I think it's supposed to be going in in the next couple of weeks.
The permanent signage is not in. We did receive and approve the sign across from the exit. Um, that has not been installed yet, uh, required uh, DPW approval. They have to dig safe it, then procure the signs. We approved the design of the sign and the location. Um, I think it's just a matter of them getting dig safe clear and having.
Yeah, I was, I was referring to the 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 building sign, like the large FedEx sign, Amazon, they have a temporary out there. We've, they've been approved for a permanent sign. It's been designed and ordered, should be installed within the next couple of weeks. Um, so that's uh, that's the other thing. The signage and the directional, the directional uh, signage, as well as the building identification signage. All that's been related to uh, being able to uh, make sure drivers know where they're supposed to be going. And so that stuff is uh, is all coming uh, to fruition in terms of being installed. Um, and in the meantime, um, they're going to bring a a flagger in to be down at the bottom, uh, you know, and tell uh, trucks which way they should go. I I do think uh, they are trying their best. It's a, their business model using a lot of independent drivers is a a challenging model for them as opposed to a Dewey pile where, you know, I call Peter Lotta, the owner, and he's in his company and tells his drivers, this is what you do. Amazon's business model is a little bit more challenging, but uh, I think uh, they have in good faith done uh, everything that they told us to do, and they continue to work with the town. Uh, and putting a flagger down there is rather extraordinary step, but they've been willing to do that as well. So uh, tomorrow, along with a memo from Scott, uh, we'll put up the uh, update uh, to the board from Amazon as well with those steps, just so people can see them.
Right, and my last question was um, just, can you just explain um, why sidewalks aren't included? I know you already told me this earlier, but I think there are people listening who would like to hear just a little, a a short version of how expensive sidewalks are and how this won't cover it.
Yeah, I'll 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 tee this one up, and then I'll hand it over to our uh, DPW Director, who is also an engineer. Um, uh, holistically, uh, we are looking at a pavement management plan every couple of years. That uh, that overall rates and prioritizes the limited investment money that we have for roadway. Um, we have done a similar uh, assessment or in the process of completing a similar assessment on all of our sidewalks across town. And like any time you do an infrastructure uh, assessment, there's always going to be a funding gap. Um, this board knows uh, for the last four or five years, the number one priority of the board in terms of our legislative priorities uh, with our delegation when they come in is we need additional funding for infrastructure. So under chapter uh, chapter ninety, they're called chapter ninety funds or transportation funds. It's a bond that's issued by the state, and the money is distributed to municipalities specifically for roadway maintenance. And like most public infrastructure, it is chronically underfunded. So the town of Northborough is in a a a a better position than most in that we have a comprehensive pavement management plan that has objective um, objective uh, reviewers look and rate all of our roadways. So we know. We know exactly how much money we need to spend to maintain our roads and ideally you want to be on an upward trajectory, not just kind of maintaining what you have. Um we are working on a similar plan for sidewalks. And uh as you can imagine, you know, as we get that inventory down and the ranking of all the sidewalks. Our natural process is to fix. But to fix it first. So basically. We need to make sure that the sidewalks that we have in place now that require maintenance and servicing are taken care of. And then logically and resources permitting. Determine where it makes the most sense to connect up sidewalks in neighborhoods to create longer areas where people or pedestrians can. Can walk. Um but sidewalks can be extremely expensive, particularly on. Uh existing roadways uh where you have uh easements, takings, large trees, drainage issues. Um it can be a very expensive uh proposition. Uh so uh you can spend all of your money that for maybe that we have for the entire year on sidewalks. To put in a small stretch of sidewalk and not maintain. The ones that you have. So it's about having a coordinated plan. For the entire town, not just for any one neighborhood. And uh that's the plan that we're working on and putting together uh now. I don't know how much of us, be a thunder I've stolen, Scott, but um but I think it's important like when we. There are some towns where it comes to roadways, it's it's who yells the loudest and who you know, whether or not your roadway gets paved. We try to, with everything that we do, approach things in an objective uh manner. Uh so there's a. An objective rating, uh criteria. Prioritization, and then you decide what do you have for funds? And at some point, uh if you're going to go to town meeting and make a case for additional potential funding to do more roadways or more sidewalks. There has to be a logical plan associated for why you're doing those sidewalks, where you're doing them. And um and how much they're going to spend. There will be a significant gap, just like there is with our roadways. We have a plan right now. We spend one point one million dollars a year to maintain to maintain our roads. And that keeps us at about a seventy-three uh payment condition index or roadway condition index rating. The seventy-three is what it sounds like, you know, just like in in the school, you know, a hundred is perfect, you know, sixty is a D. Seventy is we're we're pushing CC plus. This is overall now. Um when we first started this, we started putting, we put one point one million dollars into roadways for like the last five years. And we've. Uh up a little bit. Very expensive. And so uh and again, when you have limited funds, you have to have some sort of a prioritized manner. In which you're going to make those investments. And uh and it should be as objective and scientific as scientifically done as you can. So. That's what we're doing. Uh that's what we're doing for uh sidewalks and so.
So in conjunction with roadway maintenance and maintaining our roadway uh rating index in that. You know, low to mid seventies, we also have um for lack of better terms catastrophic failures. Where a culvert pipe breaks. And it it results in a in a sinkhole that we need to roadplate over and address. So we balance that as a municipality with the needs of sidewalk repair, sidewalk expansions and roadway. Uh repair and reconstruction and maintenance. And uh to go a little bit on the other side of John's discussion related to the complications with sidewalk construction. Um we have locations we've looked at in town for sidewalk connectivity. Some of the things to consider, you know, beyond property ownership. Is drainage. When you put a sidewalk in, you need a curb. When you put a curb in, you need closed drainage. You need catch bases and pipes. Those are very expensive to put in and they need to discharge somewhere. So now you need a drainage discharge easement. So it's a long process. In order to build a sidewalk, you generally have a planning year where you plan it all out. Talk to ne- neighbors and residents, come up with a plan and solutions. You then have another year where you can get land acquisitions and then a year of design and a year to build. It's a long. Process and there are often uh hurdles that are are difficult to overcome. Fiber optic lines on the on the underground are one of them. The simplest thing is somebody's lawn. You know, if you have a relatively level. Lawn adjacent to uh the roadway. And I put a six-inch sidewalk in front of it, your lawn that used to drain into the gutter doesn't do that anymore. Because now I have a six-inch bump there. So there are a lot of considerations to take into a sidewalk construction that. You know, the the fine tuning engineer side of me loves to engage in. Um but it's it's a process. So. It's I I wish it was as simple as a white line with some more asphalt and say walk over here, but unfortunately, that's that's not the case.
Okay, well, I just brought it up because the um. The the cross country and the track team long distance runners do still. Use the section of Bartlett Street that doesn't have a sidewalk. So. In the interest of. Fairness and safety for the. The children. Um. The young teenage runners. I thought I would. Just let you know that I'm still thinking about it and I think I'm probably not the only one. But anyway, the rest of that sounds wonderful. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Kristen. Uh any other board committee members? Uh if I could just actually tack on one thought there, um with regard to pavement management, uh one. Thing that is repeated to us uh is that uh. Uh the longer you defer maintenance and repair on roadways, the. Greater the curve of the cost to recover it once you do finally address it. If you can address it early on and maintain it early on, the cost is relatively low. If you defer some of that work and the uh. Roadway degrades too far, now you have much more expensive costs to. Uh to completely recondition uh redo it. So. Um any. Any diversion of dollars uh we would have. To some projects means that some other roadways or some other of of these things are not being addressed. And potentially become more expensive uh down the road when we do finally get to them. Uh and so I'll go back. Uh any other comments, questions on this? Uh Julian?
Yes, well, um first of all, I'm really glad to hear that there is a sidewalk management plan taking place right now because. You know, the this cost in the project is daunting, but I think people are walking more and um. It's just, you know, it it builds a healthier community. So that's that's good news, except for the price tag. But um I just have one question on the bicycle lanes. So. Because of the traffic there, which is I, you know, some of it is trucks, will there be some kind of physical barrier between? The road and the bicycle lane, or is it just a painted bike lane kind of thing?
Uh through the chair. It would be a painted bike lane and. Um one of the goals when you're laying out um bike lanes is consideration of. Um a driver um uh understanding of what's coming. So when you have a wide swath of pavement like you have on a on the industrial portion of Bartlett Street in a forest. It's easy to have a a dedicated bike lane. When you get into a more. A narrower pavement section like over by St. Bernadette's. It's it's a shared bike lane and that's not something that drivers in Northborough are accustomed to. You know, we're, you know, drivers in Cambridge, like I was saying earlier, in Somerville, they're accustomed to shared bike lanes. Approaching an intersection and understanding that there's likely a bicycle behind them or in front of them. That's not something that is 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 commonplace um in central Mass. So that's, those are some of the considerations that. That our our traffic engineers make. In recommending and laying out the bike lanes. That's why I I. Thought um Algonquin Regional High School was a logical terminus for a bike lane. It's a destination location. The pavement narrows down substantially after that. Uh but our traffic engineers will come up with a a a a safe and appropriate layout. But no, there will be not. There will not be a physical barrier between cyclists and uh and vehicles.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julian. Uh any other questions, comments from the members of the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Uh yes, Mr. Chair. I move the board vote pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A. To accept funds from Amazon for the purpose of traffic safety mitigation on Bartlett Street and to authorize the town administrator to expend such funds.
Okay.
Moved by Scott Rogers, seconded by Leslie Rattan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead?
Aye.
Julian Hirsch?
Aye.
Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Leslie Rattan?
Aye.
And I, Jason Perro, vote aye. That carries unanimously. Next item of business is uh acceptance of public health grant funds from the state pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A. John, do you want to take this or?
Yes, I'll take this one. So uh showing once again that we go after every bit of grant funding that's available for us. Uh. Uh Kristen Wickstead, the um. Uh health agent uh took a lead on this, trying to work with our uh our fellow. What's that?
Kristen Black.
Kristen Black, I think is who you mean.
Oh, well, good job, Wickstead. You did awesome on this one. Kristen, but too many, the worst thing is one spells it with an E, the other with an I, so I'm going to be messing that up from now on, so. So just, uh you've had presentation uh when we applied for this grant initially, you had a full presentation. It's shared health. Uh services, uh health nurse services. Um. Uh it is uh inspectional services, software. Uh Northborough is taking the lead agency. It's a three hundred thousand dollar grant. Um and uh so we have been awarded uh uh and this is an annual grant, three hundred thousand dollars uh annually. It's a three-year, initial three-year grant uh that you can potentially renew for. Up to nine years. We'll see how the funding uh lasts. Uh but this is great news for us. So we went in working with. The towns of Westborough, Southborough and Boylston. And uh in your packet is the uh congratulations award letter. And uh so at this point in time. Uh similar to the uh funds uh that you just approved to accept, uh you need to uh uh vote. This evening to accept this grant funding. Um it is subject to an approved work plan, uh working with uh with the state. As well as uh an intermunicipal agreement. Between all those communities about how these shared services are going to work. So this all will be coming back to you in terms of the actual implementation and the intermunicipal agreement uh for your approval. All you need to do this evening is just vote to accept the funds so we can get the ball rolling and uh. And uh start to plan out the balance of this. Uh but we will be back for approval of uh of the IMA. Uh and we'll be, we're supposed to actually have a meeting today, uh but it's been postponed and we're meeting next Monday with those communities. Uh to to work on drafting that, town councils involved in that as well. So. Um Northborough is the lead agency, so we are the ones that will be responsible for managing these funds.
Very good. Thank you, John. Uh any questions or comments from members of the board? Leslie?
Yeah, uh John, so we are the lead community. Does that mean that Kristen and I will have a a large responsibility in terms of. Putting together the plan and uh implementation schedule? Uh.
Yeah, so it's a collaborative effort with the the other communities. Um but we are the lead agency ultimately in terms of the contracts that will be involved, particularly the. The public health nursing contracts. All the communities. Uh in this pandemic really drew this into the light is uh could use additional public health. Uh nurse services. And so what we're going to do is contract with Salmon DNA. Uh but uh Northborough, in in this case, our health agent Kristen Black. Will be responsible for supervising those contracts and any staff hired under uh this grant. So uh so and one of the things that will actually happen is a part of these services. Uh one of the goals is to free up some of Kristen uh Black's time. So rather than doing, say, septic. Uh inspections, she's able to focus on some of the higher-end things like she's been working on. So uh so we'll benefit from this. Um. All the communities are going to benefit uh from this. And so uh. Uh there's really, uh there's no downside to it other than. You always have to watch out with the state, especially my board members have been around for a long time. Uh they oftentimes will incentivize you to do something. And then earlier than they said they would uh remove funding. So nothing locks us into this. Long term. Uh so as long as this funding is available, and right now they're indicating, you know, potentially up to nine years. Uh we're going to take advantage of it. Uh and so uh we'll we'll see where we are. Uh if and when the funding. Uh ceases, we'll 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 see where we are. If it makes sense for the communities to continue to do these things. Um potentially phase it in. There's all sorts of uh options, but in the immediate future, um it's grant funded, no additional cost to the uh. Town of Northborough. However, we will see and receive additional public health services, which is the goal of the grant on the part of the state. So.
Right, okay, yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Uh basically, uh the benefit of a regional uh service, uh sharing the cost and benefiting from the services provided. More efficient uh for all the communities involved. Uh any question, any other questions or comments from members of the board? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I move the board vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A. To accept funds from the Public Health Excellence for Shared Services Grant. From the State of Massachusetts. And to authorize the town administrator to expend such funds.
Second.
Uh moved by Kristen Wickstead, seconded by Scott Rogers. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead?
Aye.
Julian Hirsch?
Aye.
Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Leslie Rattan?
Aye.
And I, Jason Perro, vote aye. Passes unanimously. Next item of business, acceptance of a donation to the Senior Center Bistro Program pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A. Um Becca, are you speaking to this one?
I can, I can speak to it.
Okay.
It's funny that it's, I I'm so happy Becca is here because uh I just, we're pitching things back and forth and uh so sometimes. It gets confusing who's working on what. Um uh this is a something that came forward from actually the Senior Center Director, Liz Tradiac. She was approached by. Uh folks from the uh Food Pantry looking to make a donation to the Senior Center Bistro Program. Uh as you know, the Senior Center Bistro Program is a uh. A non-profit center. Uh it's a program that we run essentially as a revolving fund. So we have two part-time staff and a lot of volunteers and we're able to provide uh meals uh up at the Senior Center. At uh basically at cost. Uh actually a little bit less than cost because they don't, not paying overhead. So the idea is for uh for meals, lunches at the Senior Center through the Bistro Program. And by the way, it's open to the public and anybody who wants to go up there and. Give it a try, you're welcome to. They're not open again just yet, uh but a couple more weeks and we'll be back up and running. Um but uh the thought was that they are providing some uh some additional funds as part of a community food security initiative. And uh really, they just want to commute uh to support. Uh the Food Pantry's goal, supporting, you know, community meal programs in town. So. Um it's a a ten thousand dollar uh donation and like all gifts and donations. Uh the Board of Selectmen has to vote to accept it uh and expend it for those purposes.
Thank you, John. Uh any questions or comments from members of the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman. I move the board vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A. To accept donated funds from the Northborough Food Pantry related to the operation of the Senior Center Bistro Program. And to authorize the Senior Center Director to expend such funds.
Second.
Moved by Julian Hirsch, seconded by Scott Rogers. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead?
Aye.
Julian Hirsch?
Aye.
Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Leslie Rattan?
Aye.
And I, Jason Perro, vote aye. Carries unanimously. Uh next item of business is board appointments to the Master Plan Implementation Committee and the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. Those positions uh were previously being filled by uh Selectman Tim Kalin. Tim did not uh seek reelection. And so it's up to the board to determine uh what they want to do for representation on those committees. Um if I could suggest, we first treat the diverse. If I could suggest, we first treat the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. That committee came out of the aftermath of events of last year, spring into summer, Black Lives Matter movements, various concerns and considerations arising of that. Tim was the person kind of to spearhead a town statement in support of diversity and inclusion, and also to lead the effort to form that committee and and being designated as the board's representative on that committee, which he had been chairing to this point. It's not a standing committee, it's an ad hoc committee. It's scheduled to complete its work at the end of this calendar year and report back to this board whatever recommendations have been determined. Our Assistant Town Administrator, Becca Meekins, is the staff member, serving in support of that board. And I guess what I'd like to suggest for your consideration is to have Tim continue as the board's designee to essentially complete the work of that ad hoc committee, bring it to a conclusion, and then depending on the recommendations, this board can determine how to proceed forward from that point. Any, happy to hear any opinions, comments from board members? Scott?
Yeah, in terms of it being an ad hoc committee that that finishes this phase of work by the end of the year, I think it's less disruptive to just continue to have Tim represent the town in this way. So I'd support him continuing to be our designee on the Diversity and Inclusion Committee.
Any other comments from board members? Opinions, Julian?
Yeah, I mean, I agree that Tim, Tim really started this effort and he should stay on. But the the description that we wrote for the, this board was, and I can, and I'll read from previous minutes, each board committee and department listed below is invited to employ one member to serve as a representative on the committee, Board of Selectmen, School Committee, Council on Aging, Town Administration, and the other four members represent, citizen representatives. And that is specifically a representative from the Board of Select, from the sitting Board of Selectmen. And I, I think that if, you know, if if anyone on our board would like to, like to be our representative, we should consider that. And in addition, I have to say that I think that this is potentially starting a precedent that when someone leaves board, that, you know, we will look back on this decision and say, well, we let that person stay on, and we'll let that person stay on and, you know, eventually do we, do we lose our direct representation? So that's, that's a concern of mine.
Okay, thank you, Julian. Any other comments? Yes, Kristen?
So my concern would be that for this very important committee, regardless of the fact that it's ad hoc and it's supposed to end at the end of the year, this, this version of it, ideally, it could recommend that we continue that committee. Hopefully, that would be something they would consider for the long term. It's a, it's a committee that could recommend important policy to this policymaking body of the Board of Selectmen. But even more importantly, I think it's really important not to treat a committee as though it's, you know, like, it's, it's almost like taking away their direct conduit to a voting member of the Board of Selectmen is a, is a little bit, it could be, it could be considered not really appropriate. I personally feel like it's not really the appropriate decision. I did read quite a few of the meeting minutes over the weekend, and I see that Tim is an integral part of this committee, and I'm not suggesting that he be removed from the committee entirely. I think what we could do as the board is to vote to add us an extra seat as for the member of the public, and then vote that it should be Tim, or maybe that can all be done in one step. But also have one member of the committee, this committee, the Board of Selectmen, actually showing up at meetings and being a direct person who can have, so the the members of the committee, besides Tim, who already obviously is friendly and comfortable coming to the Board of Selectmen, but there are other people on that committee who may not feel the same, letting them have that direct line to the Board of Selectmen. I'm not sure I worded that perfectly, but I hope you understand my, my message.
Sure.
I think it's just a really important committee, and I would hate to see it lose its connection to the board.
Okay.
Not me against Tim.
Right. I'm sorry, Leslie, did you have something you wanted to offer?
Yeah, well, first of all, I just want to preface this by saying Tim has done a fabulous job. He took it upon himself to really initiate and get this going and put together the statement and you know, has been running the committee and is very well-regarded, very well-liked. I don't want there to be any question about that. I've also seen the meetings, and I know he takes a lot of pride in that particular committee. So I do understand what Kristen is saying. So, you know, I don't, do we have the, can we do that as far as adding another seat? Because I would like to see if we can be creative in being able to keep Tim on. Again, understanding Kristen's concern. But ensuring that he can be part of this committee. Because I understand that he has done a good job. I've seen it myself, and I would like to figure out a way that we can keep him on. I understand the need to have a direct conduit, because it is an important committee that will come out with some policy. I'm not too concerned about the fact that, you know, the term or the length of the committee may be renewed, because, you know, at that point, we could have another discussion about that if Tim were to remain. But, you know, what can we do? What is within our realm of possibility to, to, to make that happen?
Thank you, Leslie. John, yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. So this isn't a standing board or committee. It's not based in charter or bylaw. It's an ad hoc committee. The Board of Selectmen essentially can do whatever it likes with it. You created this. You can vote tonight to abolish the committee. You can expand it to twenty members. You can decide, there's no, you can decide to make it be a Board of Selectmen or designee, in which case Tim would be able to serve there. So you can do whatever you want with the committee. One suggestion might be ask the committee what they like, if there's a concern that they feel that not having a sitting Board of Selectmen is a concern for them, or if they're comfortable moving forward with, with Tim serving. What does the committee itself want? If you're worried about potentially upsetting or feeling, making somebody feel alienated, or if they're not being considered, ask the committee what they'd like to do. Would they like Tim to continue on? Would they like a different board member? Would they, you know, that's another option. But the bottom line answer to Leslie's question is, it's an ad hoc committee. You can do what really, basically, whatever you would like to do.
Thank you, John. Any other comments?
Can I make another comment?
Yes, go ahead, Kristen.
Um, that was actually, I'm really glad John said that, because that was another idea that I thought of earlier, and I just wasn't sure if that asking the committee was allowed, because it, it seemed like a vote would have to take place tonight, and asking the committee would have to take place in the future. But that was definitely another idea. If there's a way to ask the members of the committee, obviously, since Tim is on the committee, it's, you know, maybe you could ask the vice chair.
Why don't, why don't we, let me make this suggestion. It may be reasonable to inquire of the committee itself, how its work is going and how, you know, what would make them feel comfortable. So for purposes of tonight's meeting, would we want to agree to have Tim continue as the board's designee through the next meeting of the Board of Selectmen, at which point we will have made that inquiry, we will receive that information, and at our next meeting, first meeting in June, we can then make a decision about how we want to proceed on this. Leslie?
Yes, I would be in favor of that, because again, I do feel that Tim should remain involved, assuming that he would like to be. But while we are here tonight, I would like to ask Becca, if possible, what her insight might be as far as that goes, since you're an active member of that committee.
Sure, Leslie. So the one thing I will say, I don't want to speak on behalf of the committee at all, and we do have a meeting this Thursday. So this is something that the board would like us to discuss as a group. We can certainly, you know, add that to our, to our plan for Thursday. I will say that I, you know, this committee has a set end date, and it has a very specific goal in mind in terms of delivering recommendations to this board. And it has taken a few months for us to sort of get our footing and sort of get into a routine and figure out what areas we're going to focus on. And Tim has been an instrumental part in, in that process. And so I would really, I think to take him out of it now, when we're, we're like six months in, we're coming up on the six-month mark, I think it would set the committee back, just because, you know, bringing somebody new on board is getting somebody up to speed, and then losing all of the work that Tim has done with us. And I know that he has the respect of the committee members. And I just, whether or not you expand it, you know, I just think to take him out of it at this point would be, I think it would set us back, just in terms of our work and the process that we've gone through and sort of where we're headed. But, you know, I'm more than happy to, to bring it up to the committee at our meeting and, and just get a feel for where they're at, if that's what the board wishes.
If that's, is that agreeable to all board members?
Yes.
Julian?
I, I just want to emphasize the fact that I think we're all in agreement that Tim, Tim should stay on. He is an integral, very important part of that committee. The, the major question for me is whether we follow the definition of what we agreed upon months ago, and that is that we have a sitting Board of Selectmen represented on that committee. So I think that's, that's the larger issue, for, for me, anyway.
Okay, thank you. Leslie?
Well, yeah, I think that's the point of going back to the committee. If, if the rest of the board members think that's a good idea, Becca could discuss that with the committee at that point, it may not be an issue for them. I don't think that we're certainly going to lose the momentum necessarily. And if it's something that's not important to the committee, then I would recommend that Tim stay on and do what he's doing. I think, you know, I would be in favor of him being the board designee, but in the meantime, finding out what the committee thinks about that. And go from there at our next meeting.
I would just
Yeah, I agree.
Observe that as a former selectman, Tim is acquainted with all of us, is acquainted with town staff. Additionally, we have Assistant Town Administrator, Becca, participating in the committee as well. I don't regard it to be an issue of communication back to this board as far as what the activities of the DNI committee are. I'm less concerned about that, and in particular, too, I, essentially, the committee is halfway through its schedule, halfway through its work, scheduled to complete at the end of this calendar year. And any recommendations that come out of that will inform whatever we do, whether that's to, you know, create a standing committee or whatever other actions we might take, that's a separate undertaking in my mind. It's not necessarily a continuation of this ad hoc committee, which is doing the preliminary work to decide what directions we want to go in. So again, for purposes of this meeting, on this particular issue, I guess I would ask if there is a motion to have Tim Kalin continue as this board's representative on the Diversity and Inclusion Committee through, I don't have my calendar in front of me, hold on.
June fourteenth.
Your next meeting is June fourteenth.
June fourteenth. So without making the motion, because someone else has to do that, I would ask for a motion to designate Tim Kalin as this board's representative on the Diversity and Inclusion Committee, continuing through the Selectmen's meeting scheduled for June fourteenth. Leslie?
Mr. Chair, I have a motion, but I added a little bit to it, so tell me if it's not not correct.
Why don't you make a motion, and we can talk about it, Leslie?
That sounds good. I move the board vote to appoint Tim Kalin as the board's designee to the Diversity and Inclusion Committee until further input is received about the importance of a formal Board of Selectmen designee by our June fourteen meeting.
I find that satisfactory.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Leslie Rattan. We have a second by Scott Rogers. Any further discussion on this interim action? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Rattan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Pro, vote aye. So we will, Becca, if you could make the inquiry to the DNI committee, and I imagine that might have to be a posted agenda item by tomorrow for Thursday meeting.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. And then the second part of this agenda item is this board's appointment to the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Once again, Tim had been serving in that capacity. And this will be an effort that will require a board member to be a participating member. So I would ask, we can inquire which board members have interest. If there's more than one that has interest, then we can move to kind of a formal nomination and second model and vote to make a selection. So I'll just open it up to see if anyone has an interest. Julian?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have great interest in filling that position. And I'd like to say that a lot of my interest stems from the fact that I was assigned three years ago to be the representative on the CMRPC Committee, and I've learned a lot. I've, I've met a lot of people there. I've seen what other towns have done. And I, you know, I think that that is, is good background for, for a person who would sit on the MPIC, in addition to the fact that I've, I'm serving on the White Cliffs Committee and Northborough Historic District Committee. And Society, and it's of historic buildings in a town. So based on that, I, and I apologize, I don't really like to promote myself, but I, I just wanted to kind of point that out, that, that my committee, if you choose to elect me.
Any other board members? Scott Rogers? Uh, Scott Rogers?
And then, you know, defer to Tim uh, with his, his uh, role and, and greater level of experience. So love to serve in that capacity. I will defer to Julian uh, and, and uh, support her on, on that position.
I move the board vote to appoint Selectman Hirsch as the board's designee to the Master Plan Implementation Committee.
Second.
Moved by Leslie Rattan, seconded by Scott Rogers. This is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julian Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Rattan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Perro, vote aye. Congratulations, Julian.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item is uh, reschedule our August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one Selectmen's meeting to August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, one week later. Uh, John, do you wanna speak to this?
Yeah, if I, if I may, this is at my request that this was on the agenda. Uh, we just have some scheduling conflicts in my office, and uh, and this would alleviate those. As I said, we're trying to work around uh, people's uh, schedules um, uh, over the summer, and uh, just moving it uh, one week uh, would be, would be helpful. So uh, I would appreciate your consideration of that.
Okay. Uh, board members, uh, any concerns or objections? Um, we have just the one meeting in August anyway, um, so this is just moving it by a week. Uh, very good. Uh, do I have a motion?
Uh, Mister Chair, I move the board vote to reschedule the August sixteenth board meeting to August twenty-third.
Moved by Scott Rogers, Rogers, seconded by Leslie Rattan. This is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julian Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Rattan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Perro, vote aye. Mark your calendars for the twenty-third. Uh, next item, Execution of Cemetery Deeds one, 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 six, one, 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 seven, and one, 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 eight. Do I have a motion?
I move, uh, Mister Chairman, I move the board vote to execute cemetery deeds one, 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 six, one, 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 seven, and one, 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 eight.
Moved by Kristen Wickstead, seconded by Leslie Rattan, and I'll just add the comment, Kristen, this is um, frequently the job of the newly elected board member to handle cemetery deeds for a period of time. I spent three years in my first term reading cemetery deed motions.
Hey, I'll get, I'll get lots of practice.
There you go, right. Uh, this is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julian Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Rattan.
Aye.
Jason Perro votes aye, that carries unanimously. John, any other business to come before the board?
No other business this evening.
Thank you, John. If there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mister Chairman, oh, anybody else wanna do it?
I just said so.
I move to adjourn the, I'm, I'm, I make a motion, I move that the board adjourn the May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Moved by Julian Hirsch, seconded by Leslie Rattan. This is a roll call vote. Kristen Wickstead.
Aye.
Julian Hirsch.
Aye.
Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Rattan.
Aye.
And I, Jason Pro, vote aye. This meeting is concluded. Thank you all very much to board members and staff members. Good night.